Didn't need it, but we got it.
So there's Brenda just saying that there's some people listening to the bond issue from the Great Plains Board.
It must have died for me. Let everybody know. That was awesome.
You know, like could have been that lightning strike down there could have just as well been any of the overcrowded trailer person were.
You know, they said it might not be a light. It might be a fire that did not.
A what?
Yeah, fire that did.
I talked to a homeowner that came around this morning and he didn't know they did have lightning in the area at the time, but wasn't certain what actually started. I don't think here it must have just went to the left.
Yeah.
That's what I was surprised too.
Did the football field pour up water? Did you put water on the field on them? There's some.
Oh, Luke, you there?
Yes, I am.
Pretty cool. Jody, are you?
That's one project that actually.
There's Jody.
That's very well.
Unless you want to play football, then it doesn't look so long.
Go to your.
A few more seconds.
Somebody in the way.
There we go.
Okay.
All right. It is nine AM. I'm going to call our weekly meeting of the Cunningham County Board of Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, June ninth, 2020. We will start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. I think I'll start with Charlie. We'll just kind of start our little rotation here.
Start over? Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, my nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Thank you. Just a little couple announcements. I'm still going to mention the two phone numbers for individuals who wish to address the board but don't want to come in. They could call in and then we will call them back during the open part of the meeting. And those two numbers are eight eight two six two nine seven and eight eight two six two four eight. We are also live streaming live, so if individuals talk, if you would just state your name and so that our general public will know who is talking. And for those that are zooming in, I guess I'm not sure who we all have, but I know we have Luke and Jody and.
Yeah, I think we have a manager. I think there's a person from the from Great Plains watching for the bond.
Okay.
Bond issue.
All right.
Discussion.
Well, we'll call on that when we get to the open part of that. So thank you. Item number three, is there any conflict of interest of any of the board members of any of the items that are on the agenda today?
No, no.
Right, very good. Item number four, action to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Vandy's and second by Gable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the minutes of the June fourth.
Move.
Twenty twenty meeting. Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. All right. Item number six, this is the time and place for the public hearing with respect to the proposed issuance by the county of its revenue bonds in one or more series to be used by Great Plains Lutheran High School Association. So with that, I will open up for the public hearing for individuals to speak on this either for or against, and I don't know who wants to start that process.
Side wire hearing, attorney puts two balls and also bond.
You can come on up or if they want to use the mic, whichever they're more comfortable with.
We're captured on our audio screen.
Federal law allows 501(c)(3) entities to borrow tax exempt so that they can finance projects that are within their 501(c)(3) purpose. And the federal government wrote the law not allowing 501(c)(3)'s just to go borrow by themselves. They wanted to have the public have input on the borrowing. And so they authorized local governments to issue on their behalf. And in South Dakota law, we have a municipal statute nine dash fifty-four, that's the economic development bond statute, and counties are given that power. So counties and cities in South Dakota can issue tax exempt bonds for 501(c)(3)'s. And normally we see nursing homes, hospitals, schools. Those are probably the three main. We have YMCA's, those types also. And so one of the requirements is to allow the public opportunity to be for or against a project. Historically, most of the time I have not ever had anyone show up and say, no, I don't want this, but I assume someday someone will show up and say, not in my backyard, I don't want, I don't want a new school in my backyard. But usually that is that is not the case. So this is the opportunity for the public to address it. The questions that counties and cities normally have is, does this affect our borrowing capacity? No, because this does not count. This is not constitutional debt. This is not debt of the county. The county acts solely as a conduit. They issue it, but the only thing, even by state law, the county cannot pledge anything. They can't pledge any of their money. They can't guarantee it. So they're restricted. So you're restricted. So really, it's just a conduit issue. And as I like to explain it, we close it, then everything's assigned to the bank, and then from there it's between the bank and the 501(c)(3) entity. The only thing that that comes up is post issuance compliance for federal tax law. And that's something that even though you're the issuer and it's your responsibility, it's up to the school district to make sure that they spend their proceeds as they said they were going to, that they spend it on the 501(c)(3) project, that they spend it at a certain time. And also they're not supposed to take the money that they borrowed at taxes exempt interest rate, turn around and invest it at taxable rates and make what they call arbitrage, so there's restriction. However, I'm not sure we can find an investment right now that would make more money short term for that. So that is basically the process. The process is the city or the county issues the bonds, the bank buys the bonds, gives the money to the county in theory. Then the county then lends through a note and a mortgage and a loan agreement, the bond proceeds to the to the school. And then the school mortgages their property, promises to pay, and then all of it back to the county, and then the county assigns it to the bank. So at the end of the day, the bank has everything. They have the bond and the note and the mortgage. So that's the payment. So far, luckily, I've not had in the past thirty-two years any issues with 501(c)(3)'s having problems. It's just, and if it is, it's usually between the county being formed, but it's between it's between the bank and.
So will the board have future documents that they require to sign?
Correct.
So maybe, I mean, we should have had action to authorize the chair to sign future documents.
That's the next resolution.
Okay.
So the resolution that we provided will.
Okay, it's within there. All right.
It will authorize the chairman and the auditor to sign such documents as it be necessary.
All right.
And so usually what you'll see is you'll see obviously the bond, the note, the loan agreement. And I can walk everyone through and we'll once the bank.
Okay.
Gives us the final terms, then it's just the chairman and the county auditors work.
Okay. All right.
Have we done one of these before?
No, we have not.
We did a pass through with Lake Area.
We did something with Lake Area, but it was not exactly this.
It was a pass through.
I can't remember exactly what it was.
Be the.
I looked it up to see if it was the same thing, and it was not, but right now.
Yeah, the city, the city did the last one.
Okay.
But they're refunding, they're refunding forty million dollars worth of their bonds. And so.
Right.
In order to have what's called bank qualification, which means the banks can go to the Fed, borrow at zero, and then lend the money out, and they get to deduct their eighty percent of their interest expense. So it's a benefit, so it lowers the borrowing rate for the school. And so that's what we were looking for is bank qualification. And the county's not going to issue more than ten million this year on any project. So that's why we came to the county. Either that or the interest rate would have been adjusted up. We're trying to save money and build things.
Sounds good. All right. Does anyone else have any comments they would make during this public hearing?
I'm sure there might be, there might be somebody on, it's listening by Zoom. There was another person on there.
If there's someone on the Zoom, if you would like to speak on this, we would welcome you to do that.
We also have the conference, eight hundred number N. I don't think anybody's.
Okay.
Yeah, I have this Christian Westwood, former chairman of Great Plains. I just have no questions, no concerns, just.
All right, thank you, Christian.
Perfect.
So Christian, is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against this project? Hearing none. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against this project?
Maybe we got someone calling in.
Donuts.
I think, well, at least we got donuts. You know the rules, Jody.
All right, I'll call one more time. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this project for or against? Hearing none, and your phone stayed quiet. I guess we will close the public hearing at this time then, and we will move on then to item number seven, which is action to adopt a resolution authorizing and providing for issuance of the county of the of its revenue bonds to be used by Great Plains Lutheran High School Association.
So move.
I think Johnson made the motion and then.
Second.
Waterman second. All right, so now, or do we have any comments, questions, concerns?
Not just, my question, my concern about our ability to, my concern was that this could affect whether or not this affected our future ability to issue bonds. So, and you answered that question, I think, in the previous meeting and just now, so.
And also, I've been tracking, we have Minneapolis, a 501(c)(3) went into default. And so I tracked to make sure that it affected credit rating. Credit, the credit bureaus don't view this as actually any of your debt. So even if it went into default, it doesn't even affect your credit either.
Okay.
That's.
Good to know, too.
Good.
And those different scenarios, you never know. Anyone else? We ready to vote? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. We'll look forward to the paperwork.
And if there's any questions, feel free to call me.
Yes, thank you.
Work there.
Start moving, nerd.
All right, then we will move on to item number eight, our monthly reports extension. Jody is joining in on Zoom. Jody, would you like to give your report, please?
Sure. Well, I'm just gonna tell you a little bit about what's going on. We are slowly coming back to work. Last week I started kind of half and half, bringing things back and working on the South Dakota four H has a South Dakota four H summer series, and this is open to the public. And we have, it just started last week, June one, and we have one thousand three hundred youth signed up for this summer series. I'm working on one for week five and week nines, so we're kind of meeting monthly and working on this and getting this planned. I worked a lot yesterday on my lesson, and my lesson is a pre-recorded Zoom, learning about laundry, so kids can kind of learn about getting back to the basics and learning some of those skills they can help their parents with. So this month, SDSU extension for June has no face-to-face programming, continues for right now. Virtual programming is expected. Right now, we would be at four H camp, but with the weather, I'm kind of glad we're not at four H camp. So in July, we can do some virtual program, doing some more, but some small groups can start with fifteen people or less. So that's what the recommendations are right now. And then we're looking into August, kind of waiting to see what numbers bring. The regional office did reopen to staff yesterday, or June eighth, yes, yesterday. So they are coming back to work also. The goal is to have us all back to the offices by July one. So many events have been postponed. We are doing special foods right now virtually and working together with a team of northeast area four H advisors, and we've scheduled six different opportunities for youth to do special foods via Zoom. So we are starting that next week. Our four H Leaders Association met June one, and we're going to meet again tonight to discuss our modified achievement days for August third through the sixth.
All right, Jody, so it sounds like you are planning on the achievement days then? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, it'll be modified. We, right now at this time, our groups for August are no larger than fifty. So that may not include any public to come when we have our four H family or the family and their youth, you know, and and bringing in their animals. We're just kind of working on that right now, and we'll discuss that more tonight at our leaders meeting, so.
And you said that was August?
Third through the sixth.
All right.
And we're meeting via Zoom again tonight, so.
Okay. Yeah, it'll be interesting. It'll be a different view.
Yep, and they'll just have to understand that this is hopefully only the year we have to do this, so.
Right, for sure. All right, anyone else have any questions or anything for Jody or?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jody.
Thank you, Jody.
Thank you, Jody. All right, then we'll move on to the auditor.
Well, the 2020 primary election is pretty much wrapped up. We still have an office, a back office full of things that need to be sorted through and prepared for the general election coming up. All in all, it went really well. I did not receive any complaints. I did hire extra staff this time to keep things moving smoothly and to go out on election night and retrieve all of the electronic equipment from the outlying polling places. So that was all brought in that night. Our ballot counter worked really well. We had very few jams, very few ballots that had to be run through more than once. We did have some strange ballots again this year with some creative write-in votes, which we do not do anything with until we would have a recount, and then we would look at that. There was, there was a write-in on the Democratic presidential ballot on one of them, I noticed. Lot of food stains on the ballots, which is normal, but otherwise it, it, most of the work, the heavy work was before the election. We do now have to figure out how we are going to mail out almost four thousand mail-out ballots for the general election, because we have a timeframe. Early voting starts on a day in September. We're supposed to have everything mailed out that day. I'm not sure how that's going to work unless they're going to allow us to access the total vote system to prepare the, to prepare the ballot envelopes ahead of time. And, you know, with the primary election, we didn't even get our ballots on time.
So I was gonna ask.
For the mail-out. So there are a few things. Hopefully, everything will run smoother in November. Just depending on the COVID situation at that time, it'll determine how we set up the polling places again. But all in all, the election went really well. I want to thank my precinct workers at the polling places for stepping up and volunteering to work, waiting on all the people that actually came through to vote in person, my staff here and the staff that I have on hand on election night to help us get everything counted and sorted out, and the maintenance staff who were, they were kind of understaffed at the time, but they hauled a lot of things out to the extension building for me, so. So right now, we are getting back to preparing the budget for 2021. So I have department heads that are turning in their budget requests. Some of the nonprofits are coming in also, and that will be the next step. Starting in July, we'll be having budget hearings every Tuesday to, not hearings, but we'll be reviewing departmental budgets. Our budget hearings don't start until September, actually, so. That's what we're doing, other than our normal bills, payroll, keeping up on voter registrations.
Cindy, have you heard, is the Secretary of State going to do that mass mailing again?
No, because when they sent the mass mailing out in June, voters were allowed to mark their application all, which means they were applying for every election in 2020. So they do not have to apply again. The problem is going to be, do they, do they realize what they applied for? Do they realize by marking all that they are going to get a general election ballot? There was a lot of confusion on election day. They didn't realize that the ballot we sent them for the primary was the same ballot that was being voted on on June second. Lot of confusion, which is normal for a primary. People just don't understand South Dakota's process of primary election, so. We'll deal with that. It'll, we'll have maybe a month or so off before we have to jump in. I believe ballots have to be finalized by about the second week in August with the Secretary of State's office, and we'll go from there.
Cindy, I got a question, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask, but I will, in reference to the budget. We were kind of forewarned about our health insurance for the 2021.
Yep.
Budget. Is it, when was the last time we had, we took old Colts for that? And is it time to do that again? Or, I was just thinking about that, because it's going to be a probably one of the larger.
Well, I think last time, I think last time wasn't part of the deal, was that they gave us a significant discount if we agreed to stay with.
If we agreed to stay with them for another year. Otherwise, we would have had like a twenty.
Was that two years ago?
No, that was.
Just last year.
It was last year.
For this year, yeah. And I will tell you that I don't think our claims have gone down, which is what a new company would also look like. But yes, where, when our agent gave us the renewal, which I think was like fifteen percent, where it could have been twenty-five percent based on our claims, there was kind of a gentleman's agreement that we would maybe be true to our current company.
But also, we were forewarned that we were gonna.
That there would be another increase this year, yeah. But I have not heard what that is yet.
Good.
Yeah. I do know that departments are budgeting fifteen percent.
For how much?
Prairie Lakes was, was included in that reduction in rate last time, wasn't it? Didn't Prairie Lakes give us a fifteen or twenty percent reduction to?
We're with Sanford.
Or Sanford's?
Sanford is who our.
I get it too confused.
Sanford is who our insurance company is. They gave us a reduction last year.
A reduced increase, basically.
Reduced our increase, correct. They reduced our increase that we should have probably seen last year for pay this year.
That's also carried forward to this year, then?
That I don't know yet. I, they have not given me any indication yet on what the renewal would be.
That's a question for the, our agent, probably.
Fifteen percent instead of twenty-five percent.
Yes, for what we're paying this year, yep.
And those usually don't come in till later that they even know. I think it's later in the year before they get there.
Well, that's good, because it's, it's a, it's a job. I mean, it's a, it's hard to go through those policies and those.
Yes, it is.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for Cindy? Now, we'll move on to Director of Legalization with Shawna. Morning, Shawna.
Morning, Shawna.
First one in here?
Oh, you have those over there. It'll just be in stereo.
Oh.
They're both on.
You can turn on both on.
Oh, that's okay.
So you're stereo.
Okay, so we have just turned in our first six months of sales to Department of Revenue. They will start going through them, and then we'll start discussing audit times. However, Harfield person just put in their resignation, and they're going to the IRS. I'm not sure how our audits, our sales audits are going to look this year. We did have a video conference with the Department of Revenue over some new laws and stuff that had passed, new legislature that passed. One issue that we are going to have, which is not really an issue at all, our discretionary formula that we passed last year, the zero percent for five years. They basically have, we need to redo our formula and put in a different law. They basically combined all of the classifications under one law now. So instead of on one line where it basically states three different laws, we can strike those out and just do the one law. So it's basically just making it easier for us or the Department of Revenue to actually look up the laws, and you can find everything in one place. So everything about the residential, commercial, ag, it's all now in one place. Yeah. So.
Sure, so is that any of the content, the actual rules about it?
No, none of the rules have changed. But if we do not adopt a new one, we will not have a discretionary formula.
Okay.
So everything that is in right now goes forward, but if we do not adopt a new one, then we will not have one.
But the laws themselves, I mean, the way that we wrote it, there's no change in the formula or anything like that.
Nope, nope.
So I wrote that, so I can work with you on that.
I actually have a copy of it. That, that's what this is. And so I just want to give you guys a heads up, because I'm not sure, do we just adopt resolutions on the first try, or do we have to like go through and do?
No, the resolution, no, resolution does not need a public hearing or anything.
Yeah.
Just.
I just wanted to give you guys a heads up.
Anything is open for public discussion, you know, before the board.
But, yeah. So then I can just give Cindy a copy of it and.
Get it on the agenda.
Also be challenged.
What's that?
Any resolution can also be challenged, but.
So, yeah, just get it put on the agenda then.
Yep, I, we didn't find out till later, so that's, I just wanted to mention it to you before we put it on there. But the old one goes off July first, so we want to put it on as, as soon as we can. And then we are getting new soil surveys for the whole county. They're hoping to give them to us. Basically, they have some new soil types. It's supposed to be, of course, you know, better for the, more in-depth, so that our soils are a lot closer to where they're supposed to be. They are going to allow us two, maybe three years to get it put on. But right now, since nobody's really going out, we're going to try and get it all in and done. But basically, what happens is they give it to us, we get it on our GIS, but we need to, you know, go through and make sure that these soils actually match what's out there. And so do testing on them before we actually put everything in, because we can't just put it in and then pull it back out, because we actually have to go in and hands, enter all the different soil types on each property. So hopefully, you know, we have a newer soil survey anyway. Hopefully, this really won't change as far as value-wise to have any big issues, but we'll find out before we actually send it out and set it up, what, what's going to happen with that. But we are supposed to be getting those sometime in July.
I'm sure, just a quick question. So on that, have you, have you done, have you done one of these updates in the past on the soil types?
Yes, when we implemented the product, well, not even the productivity, we got our new soil survey, two thousand twelve, I think we put it in, and it changed a lot because the old soil, I mean, it was on paper, and we had to like manually like.
So that was significant, okay.
That was significant. This will not be as much, we'll actually be able to like click on the property, print out the soils. It's just more of making sure, doing all the quality check to make sure that these soils are right for our county, and there isn't going to be a big issue. I mean, some counties have way, I mean, we're a lot easier, we have a bunch of soils, but most of the county is the same. So.
Okay.
It's just making sure that's going to work.
Well, it's good to give our producers a heads up, so they know that something is going to be changing.
Yep.
And we shouldn't scare them in the fact that it doesn't mean that it's going to change, it's just a new soil, soil, soil survey.
Our top dollars and everything will stay the same. So it's just a matter of if your particular property has a bunch of different soil types that we didn't previously have or goes more in depth, and it may be, you know, but it's going to be a one-on-one thing, so we won't really know until we actually enter in each individual one. But I'm hoping it doesn't change very much because ours is newer. We probably will hear things across the state about other ones because they're not as new, and so there'll be, some, some counties are still actually working off the paper ones, so. But we're kind of lucky in that aspect that we have GIS and can actually do this and get this through. that aspect, that we have GIS and can actually do this and get this through. And then we have decided our pictometry should be coming soon, so the appraisers will be starting looking at that. But some of the building permits last year that were percent complete, that we can do without much interaction with the actual property owners, we're going to start doing those now, so that we can have those done, just to, you know, allow them to have work to do and stuff before the pictometry comes in, before, you know, this winter, when they're measuring these huge buildings in the middle of winter. So we're going to start doing some of that, just in case you hear that we're out. We're, we'll be wearing masks and hopefully not really going into houses and stuff. So just more commercial and things like that.
Good.
That's all I got.
I was just going to ask you, I know like West River, some of those individuals were kind of wanting with the soil types and that sort of thing, to take into consideration of actual use. Where did that go?
They, they still haven't changed it to actual use. I see it happening at some point. The legislature did allow this year for us to make adjustments. Cottington is pretty good. We don't really have, we don't have any adjustments right now. But we don't really have a whole bunch of things that we could adjust for. But they got us kind of excited last year at school that we took the egg class, and they said we could do adjustments. And just went out and we looked at different things. But now it sounds like, yes, we can do adjustments. However, we have to go out, look at the property, document everything that we see, try and find documentation within the office to go with this. And then we send it off to the Department of Revenue, and then they still say yay or nay on these adjustments. So...
What's the criteria for someone that maybe wants to have?
Wants an adjustment. To me, well, there's really no criteria. You call, you call us up and say, you know, do you think there's something wrong with your property? And then this is the reason why. And then, basically, to me, if it's something that not everyone in the county has, or if it's just a certain area that has something extra, I know when we first started, we just, all we ever heard was, all these rocks, all these rocks, all these rocks. Well, there is a big area in Cottington County that has huge rocks. Well, then that would be an adjustment if, you know, if it's really nice soil types, and then they can't use it because of the rocks. But if it's, you know, soil type they couldn't use anyway, then, you know, so it just really depends on what it is. And it's just something that, now they're at least, you know, giving us the option to look at it, but they're still going to...
They get the ultimate say.
They get the ultimate say.
The other thing is, you know, like, some of them who have pasture land, you know, and they have a, that's where some of the...
That is still, we're still going on productivity, which still does soil type. So until they actually pass a law stating actual use, then we'll still do that. However, if it's pasture land, and there's like a legit reason that they cannot, that's not an easement or anything like that. If there's something wrong with it that they can, then that is something that we could look at for an adjustment reason. Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions for Shawna?
Good update.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Luke is still on. We will move on to item number nine, action to approve a resolution of the Johnson Raider plat. Luke, are you on there?
I am. I'm ready if you are.
All right. You go ahead.
Sure. I will, this is, this is the resolution to approve the plat of Johnson Raider Edition. I did notice that I had a spell check error there in the subtext there. I find it easier to point it out than you guys pointed out to me, that it switched from Raider to Reader there, in there. But it is the plat of Raider Johnson as opposed to Reader Johnson. That is in the Northwest Quarter of Section 8, Township 11753, the 5th Primoridian in Kynan County. For, for your reference, this is, I, I refer to it as straight west of the overhead on Highway 20. Probably the better way, for those of you who know where the sailboat landing is on Highway 20 for Lake Compeska, this would be about two miles west of that. But it is not on Highway 20, it is on Township Road. So that gives you the idea. This is a relatively simple plat. They were granting existing farmstead exemption earlier this year, over the winter, approved for that farmstead exemption. And the plan here is to, for Mr. Raider to sell this property, this five acre piece, to an individual who's been working on that site for quite some time. So that's what it was, so.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Got a motion of second. This was also approved by the planning and zoning board, so that was okay with them as well.
That is correct.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Apologize, that motion carries. All right. Thanks, Luke.
Thanks. Do you, do you want me to update you on a couple of things, or should I stay off of that and come on for a report some other time?
Like, is it okay if it's not on the agenda, Cindy, just for updates when he puts his...
It's up to you guys to determine. I guess I don't know.
Go ahead.
You guys okay with that?
Since we have you on, that's okay.
Sure. I will just, I'll just briefly update you on two things. I should have noted that I do that as a zoning officer report, but just a couple of things. The first part is more or less to notify you, something's happening that you're probably well aware of. Construction has started on the Crown Ridge Wind Farm in earnest pretty heavily here. So that has started and will continue. I was told not to expect quite as much, quite as many workers at one time as we had last year, just because they were not running into the same deadline toward the end of the year. However, that could all change as they get moved from one project to the other. The other part I want to note is that we did get a building permit application for the other wind project, which was Dakota Range, which was permitted the year before. That project, for, for those that represent that area north, maybe the Germantown, Leola Township area, just for reference, initial conversations were close to 40 towers. That is actually down substantially. They, they went down to around 15 towers as their plan. However, construction in earnest is expected toward the end of this year, with maybe some line work going on earlier, as well as into next year. So just for that information, I wanted to let you folks and, and maybe the public know as that goes on, where some of that is. And then the other thing that I wanted to point out for the Commissioner's knowledge, I mean, I have sent maybe a few inter-office emails to point that out. We are open, obviously, as Jody mentioned, at the extension building. We have out of our first district office largely been handling meeting discussions the way that we're doing it right now. I feel like, and I hope Commissioners, please get ahold of me if you have someone who's having a tough time getting ahold of me, or worse than they've ever had before. But for the most part, I'm able to respond to people a little bit quicker this way. But I have been doing things either virtually or on the phone. Someone comes in, if someone did walk through the door, they're at the office and needed to speak with me, we'd contact and make sure that I'm still available. I'm not doing anything other than county business during that 9 to 11, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, just that they'd be talking to me on the phone. One thing we have noticed is that we're maybe a little more succinct in what we're doing. But in the same breath, I'm not saying this is going to be a long-term thing. But as of now, we'll plan on it. I'm going week to week is kind of how we're handling it. So I would expect to be back into there, though, either the back end of this month, if not, otherwise, probably early next month. So like you said, let me know if you have any issues, if anyone has a problem getting ahold of me. But that's, I'll, we'll keep doing that unless there's an issue.
That was all.
All right. Thanks, Luke. We did, we did give you the approval. I was just wondering on some of those documents for you to sign, if they meet all the criteria. Has that been working out well, or have you been able to utilize that at all, or?
You know, I've only used it on a couple of them. I'll tell you, the, as we, as we did that, you remember, one of the main concerns as we started that, that process was the fact that we didn't know how long we'd be in that situation. And so now with where we're at, like, we have this one here that I just brought to you, because it really wasn't, wasn't a major issue. I don't see that as being a, a regular occurrence here, unless we get into a situation where we're, where we're all working remotely again, where everybody's remote and doing that. So to answer your question, I've only signed, I believe, one of them is all that I've had that came in in that timeframe. But it was a good service. It worked out, especially given that we had about seven weeks in between meetings there for a while, maybe even more. So that, that did help out a couple, at least one individual, I know.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update. Have a good rest of your day.
Thanks, you too.
All right. We'll move on to number 10, action to approve the auditor's account of treasure and not registered deeds fees.
The report shows you the cash and cash items on hand as of the last day of business in May. The second page of the report shows you our cash fund balances, and then we also have the registered deeds fees collected in May of $30,048.
Move to approve.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Waterman. Any further discussion? Registered deeds fees stayed right up there, so they were busy. Lot of transactions happening. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, that motion carries. Item number 11, action to approve, did Carol, or, did she want to be in here during this?
She did not say.
Okay. Action to approve the closing of the treasurer's office from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM Wednesday, June 17th, to allow employees to participate in a telephonic conference call with South Dakota Department of Revenue. I did have a conversation with her, and the reason for this is because of the COVID, that they weren't able to have their normal meetings. So this is the date now that the Department of Revenue is going to, it's for their continuing ads, so.
Move to approve.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable. Any other discussion?
One thing that I would ask is that it makes sure that it's published.
Yes, as she will. Yeah.
She's pretty good about that.
Put out some PSAs about it. That's what I had said too. So, yeah. So individuals will know. All right. Motion second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, that motion carries. Item number 12, action declare registered deeds computer equipment surplus to be destroyed.
These are two computers from the registered deeds office purchased in 2014, and the registered deeds is recommending they're to have their hard drives destroyed, as she has replaced them.
So, second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, that motion carries. Opening of the Human Resource and Labor Negotiations Service proposals. We have those.
So, my chair, looks like we have two. So I'll just open them and say who they're from, and then we'll have to take a look at them. One proposal from HR Executive Partners. They are out of, looks like they're, I think they're out of the cities. So the Twin Cities, so two copies of that one. And then we have another one. So this is 100% more than we had the last time we did this. From Multi Business Solutions, out of Fergus Falls. And I think they also, I think this one also has an office out of Wilmot. So, so they're a Minnesota-South Dakota company. So we have two, two proposals that we'll take a look at. What, what I was going to do is, there's two copies of each, but we can maybe have, Terry and I can look at them. And then if any other Commissioners want to join in, you know, we'll make copies or extract about a copy. So I'll probably scan it, scan this, and just look at it virtually myself. But, so, and then the, the goal is to accept a proposal before Terry actually departs. So that's, that's what we're hoping to do. So I don't want to go into the cost structures and things, because they can really vary depending on how they, how they structure the proposal. So, so those are the two.
We will...
What is Terry's departure date again? Remind me.
July 1.
July 1. So that, so that, if you look at the RFP, we're kind of looking at about June 23rd or 30th, to try to award. So, in a few weeks, you know, so, or accept a proposal for a proper term.
So we won't meet that last, so it would have to be the 23rd?
Yeah. Oh, that's right. It's five Tuesdays, yeah.
So it would be the 23rd is when we will make that decision, for sure. All right. Very good. Item number 14, discussion, possible action on COVID-19 practices and procedures. Anyone have anything new or different?
Seems like it's going...
Yes, I would just like to add that, you know, I've been in here a few times this week, and I've noticed the changes in the offices with the signage. And Cindy, I'm just curious, how, how are things going in your office there? Any problems?
Nope, my office is good, but we have very little customer traffic. The treasurer's office, though, has seen a lot of traffic, and I have seen people standing outside the door, so that they make sure they're, they're six feet away.
They do have cones and barrier tape and stuff set up out there, so people are...
It's going to be a challenge if we go back to in-person-to-person early voting in November, because that's where I set my ballot, my voting booth is out there.
It might be, you know, something to think about, is the way we were going to do it. Given the security station down there, it might be good to have this kind of satellite auditor's office down on the first floor. Something to think about.
It is, but I, I think it's just going to disrupt traffic on the ground floor, too. We may still have to limit...
Something that we could still have the booths out there, but just move those cones over a little bit, so it's not...
It's possible. We may not just be able to have as many booths as normal.
Right.
But we'll have to limit numbers. But I'm afraid if we move that stuff downstairs, that's where they're taking out stations for court-appointed attorneys.
Yeah.
We're going to have...
We just have to work all that out, you know. Okay.
It just may be like what we're doing with the treasurer, you only allow somebody else.
I don't have enough staff to have somebody sitting down there and getting our job done in here. So we'll see what happens.
We'll just figure it out.
The fact that we have 4,000 mailouts to take care of may cut the numbers down there also.
Would this room be available, that you could just use this?
I didn't, I was just thinking if we could slide benches up and place them...
Well, then it wouldn't be available on Tuesday mornings. I mean, well, yeah, it's...
Something to work, think about.
It's something to think about, yes. Yeah.
All right.
We've got some time to think about.
Yes.
I was just, I was curious about how things are going day to day.
Um, good, as far as I know. I haven't seen, heard of any disruptions, or anybody unhappy with the way things are working, so.
And I like how everything's clearly marked, so there should be no questions when you come to the courthouse.
But if you look, if we just take those pews, our seats, and just shovel them all forward and put the voting booths along the back wall, actually, it'd be room for quite a few.
Yeah, there would. There would. We'll see. We kind of like to keep our voters within eye contact, because they have a tendency to take their ballot and then leave the building, which they're not allowed to do if they're voting here in person. So it's a control issue, basically.
We'll figure it out. We've got some time.
Yeah.
All right. We'll move on to item 15, action to approve claims for payment.
Total claims this month, the amount paid to the state of South Dakota for the motor V collections and other state collections was $451,261.77. County claims were $330,975.95. On that first page, the very top section, those are refunds for Memorial Park Campgrounds. So those are monies that we had to pay back for people who canceled their reservations. In the election budget on that same page, you can see that I spent almost $2,600 mailing out ballots for the primary election, which is unprecedented. On page two, I did not mean to highlight that $672, but that is what it costs me to order precinct supply boxes for all my polling places or precincts. And then the next two items of $1,500 and $660, those were the actual ballot envelopes that we had to purchase to mail out. That does not include the cost of the ballots, which we do not have yet. But, yeah, so it was, the election budget may not have been prepared for COVID-19. Let's see. On page four, our court-appointed attorney budget is 51% spent, which for June is, you know, just about right on track. Hopefully, that will keep. But the problem is without, we haven't had court.
No, they haven't had court.
This may take a bash in the next couple of months. We'll have to monitor that. I don't, I don't know that I actually highlighted anything else. I think the treasurer's office also had a line item for postage. Yes, she spent $3,200 on postage, and that was directly due to being closed to the public and mailing everything out. So, yeah, there were COVID costs. I don't have anything else, unless you have some questions on any of the bills. So yeah, there were COVID costs. Um, I don't have anything else unless you have some questions on any of the bills.
Hopefully some of these extra costs, you know, if we are to get some sort of reimbursements, that those are the things that could be included. Cause they're ordinary, uh, extraordinary compared to other years. So.
Just like to say, just for JT's benefit here in the media, that the refunds for Memorial Park is $659.3.
So it's not a major.
Cent. So.
It's not a major amount. Yeah. Just people who's because of events, their plans may or may not have changed. And yeah. And I think the way Steve talked, any cancellations we had, they were filled in. Yeah. So, you know, this just shows what we had to send back. It doesn't show the amount that we took in. So it, it could have been a wash.
What, uh, curious on one thing.
Sure.
What, uh, do you have a figure on? Oh. What the election cost of total?
Uh, not yet, because we're still waiting on some of the bills to come in.
Okay.
Yeah. You can see though, that I had a large number of people that assisted us. Um, I actually had some, I hired some younger people to come in that night and go through the bags that I sent out to the rural areas to pull all that hand sanitizer and those disinfecting wipes, because I did not want that stuff to spill over in those bags and ruin things in there. So I hired three young girls to come up and go through those on election night. It's just not something that we have time to do. And I did not want to ruin any of the bags or any of the reports that were in there. So.
And you said you have 4,000 ballots to mail out.
Approximately, yep.
At a dollar 20 a piece.
Yep.
So that's $5,000.
Yep. And then if, I mean, so many voters did not realize the amount of postage that they had to put on the ballot to mail it back. We ended up paying those costs too. So.
So this 2,900, 2,591.59 is postage going out and some of the postage that we had to pay on bills that were returned.
Nope. That's just postage going out. That is not, yep. Um, the postage coming back. Some people put on one stamp. So that meant they were about half short. Some people didn't put any postage on. And I don't know what the post office's policy is. I don't know if there is a policy on, on how they handle ballots because it's clearly marked as election equi, election material. I, I'm not sure. Normally if I sent something out with none of postage on it, personally, I'd get it back in the mail. Wouldn't you? I guess I don't know.
But postage do sometimes it goes, it maybe does make a difference if it's an individual or if it's like a business or like a government.
It could be because of the, because it is election material. They may be governed under some other, um, some other law that says they have to deliver it and collect it from us.
I have a question for you, Cindy.
Sure.
Lot of primary election workers this time. And I know that we had a hard time finding some, but just for those folks that helped out, thank you first of all. And secondly, um, how do you choose those workers or?
It's based on the precinct's vote for governor, the preceding election. Whichever party carried the precinct, like if it was the Republican Party that, that carried precinct A1, then three of those workers have to be Republican Party and two have to be Democrat.
Okay.
In my opinion, it's an antiquated law, but I don't know.
We're going to be going into the general.
It makes it hard to fill a precinct table. I mean, when I tell, when I, my election workers come to the school and I tell them, leave your politics at home. So it doesn't really matter if they're Republican or Democrat, in my opinion.
Right.
Legislators may have a different opinion than I do, but, um, it's hard to fill. And some of the people that did fill in, I don't know if they'll be able to work in the fall because some of them worked for the school district and they were able to work this time because the school was closed. So.
One, one final question. You had mentioned that some of your polling workers were getting to be quite elderly. And were you able to succeed on getting some younger people involved?
I, I was, but like I said, a lot of them were able to work in June because of all the closures. They may not be available in November where I'm going to need more workers because I can't combine my precincts in a general election like I was able to for a primary. So normally I have like over 120 precinct workers and I only needed a little over 50 this time because of the ballot, because of the combination. And it worked out really well.
Madam Chair, just to, so on some of these additional postage things, um, I'm just wondering if we might be able to parse that out because there's some of the COVID reimbursement. The state has been, has been telling us to try to keep track of the stuff that's COVID related. So I wonder, you know, there, there are some absentee ballots that you mail out every year if they're.
Very.
Very, okay. So then most of that should be, is definitely COVID related. So.
Definitely. Yeah. Most of them are in office. We, the number of mailouts we've had the last few years has just been minimal.
Just like.
Like overseas or people, yep, people who are not actually here. So, um, definitely that amount is COVID related.
So we should be able to get some of that back. There might be a formula that the state wants us to, you know.
Because there's no way to identify
Yeah.
who voted by mail because of COVID.
But you can maybe, we can probably make a case. I think we can make a case by comparison, maybe.
Comparing our in-office voting two years ago to our mailout this year. Yeah. Definitely.
Probably ways.
I mean, this, this year we had more mail out than we did have people appear at the polls. So.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Anyway, we just, we made action on the claims.
Yep. Yep.
I'll make a motion.
We already have a motion of second. We're just, oh, I thought we did make.
No, we didn't.
Okay. Then.
We kind of took.
Mr. Van Duzen, make a motion. Second by Gable. Um, I guess I thought we did that before we went through it. And any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 16, action to approve automatic budget supplement.
I have nothing else on my list for the agenda.
Okay. So, uh, we'll move on then to, we probably don't have any, uh, public notices, formal commissioners, old business. Anyone have any old business? Any new business? Anything for the open?
I do. Um, I would just like to, uh, extend a thank you to those folks that came out last night, uh, from the Office of Emergency Management. I know Jamie had a, an early morning this morning, uh, as those storms, uh, began to roll through our county. Uh, we got a lot of rain in a short amount of time. We got an inch out at the lake, I think close to an inch in about 30 minutes. So it came down quick, but there was a lot of, um, weather spotters that came out as well that probably are at work here this morning. So I would just like to thank those folks for coming out and helping keep everybody safe.
I do have one thing if you're finished.
Go ahead.
And that's, uh, the combined workers. We had a storm go through about four days ago. And it hit Memorial Park pretty hard. And Steve, uh, did a wonderful job. He organized everybody, uh, got his sprayers in, got the people from over at the courthouse, the Extension Center, the, uh, Memorial Park workers, uh, they were all out there and we quarrelled a bunch of equipment and luckily nobody was hurt and very, very few campers had minor damage. We did have a water spigot that a tree fell on. We had to get an emergency plumber out. And there was some problems with the phone line. And I don't know what, if that was fixed or not. I'm assuming it was fixed.
Out over the weekend, as far as I know. Did, did this happen? This happened Thursday night.
Yeah, it was Thursday night.
Thursday night and Friday, the phone lines were out and Steve was going to contact the BIT help desk at the state to get that phone line up, but I haven't heard anything.
And there was one, uh, one electrical problem, uh, which an electrician was called in and, uh, other than that, I think our tree trimmer will be busy for a while.
Our insurance company has been notified of there could be claims.
Everybody was doing a good job. Everybody, in fact, I thank the campers. There were some campers that actually grabbed a rake and helped clean up. Well, thank you to everybody.
Charlie, you're the liaison for the park out there. And I'm just wondering how, we have new park managers out there. Are you hearing anything about how things are going?
I have not had any complaints at all about them so far or any negative comments. Uh, they're getting broken into and, uh, this is, uh, I guess a little baptism under fire.
All right.
I did get a call from Steve yesterday and give me a heads up that there was some camper out there that was distraught about, uh, paying, uh, deposits. And, uh, but I never heard from him.
With our new policy.
Yeah, the new policy, but I, it never did get to, through to me. So him, he must have just needed events, maybe. I don't know.
Uh, we did, uh, we didn't, uh, Steve mentioned, we, we lost a couple of large trash containers that went to a watery grave someplace. And maybe will be recovered in some drop year.
All right. Anything else?
Fish habitat.
Um, I do have a need for executive session, um, discussion of person, personnel issues. And, um, so I would look for a motion in a second. Then there will be no, um, nothing afterwards, any decisions made. So no action.
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Gable, second by Van Duzen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are in executive session.